Okay, good evening and welcome to this evening's board of educa- Crestwood Board of Education Studies session. Monday, April 4th, 2022. I call this meeting to order at 5:30. Mr. Noon, please take call. Roll.
Ms. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Baydun.
Here.
Ms. Elzayat. Here. Ms. Fawaz.
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mr. Sabah.
Here.
And Chair Eva Quorum.
Thank you. Okay, um, we would like to go into, if you can make the motion, Sue.
Um.
And to, uh.
Motion to go into closed session for legal opinion.
For legal opinion.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Baydun, that we go into closed session for legal opinion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, welcome back, everyone. If I can have a motion to come back into open session, please.
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by.
Support.
Mr. Sabah, that we come back out of closed session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I know that there were some questions that board members had. Um. Mr. Sabah, did you want to start? Did you have any questions about?
I, I, the question about, um, the, you know, bidding out the, uh, for the property, is that what we're talking about?
I mean.
We can't, I mean, we can only, you know, we really can't talk too much about it, but, um.
I mean, we can discuss it openly.
Well, sure. I mean, if, if this board decides that we're going to proceed and, and look at options for the property on Inster, uh, I think the question had come up previously as to, uh, you know, the process for listing. And, you know, I don't know how that works from a bidding perspective from realtors. I think Najah, you have a different perspective since you're in the industry, but I'm looking for your, your insight because of your professional knowledge.
No, I just think when you had mentioned, or when it was mentioned about bidding and that it wasn't possible. I think when we first discussed listing it, I think my question was before we knew, well, before anybody presented to the board, was that what percentage of commission would that person be asking for? So are we doing a standard?
Are there allowances for concessions on that? I mean, is that legal? I don't know.
You could, as percentage wise, I could always.
Can somebody do it pro bono and say, I don't want anything?
Of course. So long as, so long as the broker agrees, which typically the broker doesn't really hold your hand, you know, to the fire for anything. I mean, you're, there's a lot of flexibility in that. And if you're a top agent as well, a lot of times you have a little more flexibility in what your commission is. I'm, I was just wondering, was that even, was it a discussion with any of the agents or whoever was spoken to about, or?
We haven't had the chance, really, because.
Was it a conversation?
Just to be clear, here, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Vice President Kaminsky, just to be clear, no conversations were had with any brokers or any realtors in terms of the sale of the property. All that was in discussion was the, uh, someone, we had a respectful person come in and give us, uh, on their own time, just a breakdown of the property, but there has been no conversation with any real estate agent to sell the property.
Okay. And I wasn't insinuating.
I know you're not, but I'm making that clear for the public. That's all.
Okay.
Ms. Kaminsky and Ms. Elzayat.
Um, I would like to see three different appraisals for the property to see what people think that it should be.
If we go that route.
Value of it, because I'm concerned and I have no clue what property would or be, would not be worth. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is, just for the record, I did not call that one person and tell them to be here. I did receive two phone calls of people saying that they would be here, and I have heard that one of those two people was making calls to people in the area.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Elzayat.
So I don't think that we should list it with an agent. I think that we, the school.
Well, we haven't gotten to the point of if we're going to list it or not.
I'm saying if we decide to list it.
Okay.
I don't think that we need a real estate agent. I, I believe, um, that, you know, anybody who's going to come in and do something with that property probably already has their eye on it, and they probably already know what they want to do with it. If, and if that's the case, my suggestion is let's list it for 45, let's agree how many days, for 45 to 60 days, um, let's list the property ourselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
About the schematics of that.
Yeah, we can.
I'm saying as a school, Mr. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
You can.
And we can advertise it on our, um, at our meetings, we can advertise it on our website, you know, we can post it on Facebook. This property is for sale, this is what we're looking for, um, you know.
But may I address something?
Sure, go ahead.
Sue said, uh, three appraisals is three different costs for the district, so.
Yeah, but without having somebody who has more knowledge than I do.
I get it.
I can't say that that property is worth $1 or 1 million or 10 million. And I am not comfortable coming up with a price just arbitrarily without having an understanding. I will tell you that I looked a lot at properties that are for sale, and just individual 40 by 100 lots in Dearborn Heights are going from 99,000 and up. You know, so if we divide 17 acres by that amount, is that what we're going to get? No. But I'm not comfortable coming up with a price, at least I am now.
Okay, Mrs. Ashenood, go ahead.
In all fairness, desktop appraisals aren't that much money, especially on a, on a vacant piece of, um, land. I mean, you're talking between three of them, if, if you said each one was 500.
I don't think she was talking about a desktop appraisal. I think she was talking.
Because you're not going into the, that's not base, basically, basically a desktop appraisal is just that you're not going into the whole.
Comparisons.
Yeah, you're looking up comparisons. You're not entering a property, so.
Ms. Elzayat, I'm sorry, Don.
It's okay, yeah.
All right. My thing is, even if we do one appraisal, I know that the process in appraising is to bring three.
They bring three comparable.
Provide three comparable.
Yeah.
Properties.
You know, properties.
Right.
I'm just saying, one appraisal for me would suffice, because I know that they bring comparables, enough comparables.
But there's nothing to compare it to in the city.
Hold on, Sue, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Solo wanted to speak. Go ahead.
So just in response also to the appraisals, um, honestly, I think the one is enough, and a property is only worth what somebody is willing to pay for it, whether it's small or large. You find a buyer, you know, if we decide to go that route, and, I mean, the realtor, part of their job, if we go that route, is to do the comparables, is to take care of us, is to do all of those things. That's, I mean, that's what they're doing. We're not the professionals in selling property. That's, uh, I mean, I would feel better just having the realtor take care of it, if that's the route we go.
So, if the, I, as a realtor, would go in and say, okay, well, I'm going to pull comparables to give an idea of what we should list the property for. But at the same time, that person, if, if they were getting, obtaining a loan, would then still have to have an appraisal done on the property to, to say, is it worth, is it really truly worth this much? Obviously, you know, it could be worth more, but at that point, it would mean nothing to us as a district if it appraised for more than that. So getting the appraisal, obtaining appraisal prior to listing it, I think if, as Danielle's saying, you didn't choose to use an agent, then I think you would want to obtain an appraisal from an outside, a third party, but.
Mr. Baydun.
So, in our previous, uh, closed session, or study session, I should say, this was, you know, we talked about this. But when we look at comparables, right, I believe that's public knowledge, right? So when you pull comparables, that's public knowledge. Anybody can pull a comparable, correct? So if we're going to pay for an appraisal, that's going to have three comparables in it. Depending on how much it costs, I'm okay with it. But then going back, I think our best bet is to reinforce what Salwa said, was using a real estate agent and then maybe discussing the fee, because Najah said there's no legal right rules against what they can charge or whatever. Um, in my personal opinion, I think using someone with knowledge that has done it before, that can handle the overflow. If we do list it ourself, I understand, I'm okay with that too, but is there going to be a private inbox? Who's going to manage that inbox? I think we're getting into now, um, I think we can actually expose ourself and the district legally if we list it ourself, because of how the quotes will come in and how we deal with them ourself.
So that'd be my next question. Are, if we have, no matter, whether we have an agent or not, are we having our legal team look over the legal documents?
Absolutely.
Anybody would. Your agent, your attorney's going to look. So there are attorneys that handle sales as well, so are we double?
No, Trune is our, all of the legal documentation will go through Trune.
So even if we have an agent handling the documents, it's still going to go through the attorney?
It will, but we, we, we would have to find out how much they're going to charge us to do all that. Because if they're just reviewing the documentation to make sure everything's copastanic, it's different than them helping us list it and sell.
Well, they wouldn't be helping us list it.
I'm saying, but going through the entire sell process.
Well, we're, if you look at, if, if, let's just say, I threw, we threw a number out there, and the average percentage for.
Well, I wouldn't talk about percentages right now in open session.
Percentage.
Right, let's, yeah.
I'm just saying.
I'm not talking about any in partic- any, I'm not talking about a particular agent, I'm not talking about a particular.
No, no, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying that for, just so that nobody goes down that route in open session.
What I'm, okay, I'm just, if anybody has any knowledge in real estate and you look at what you, if you were to sell your own home or a piece of property, there is a going rate, and if you take that percentage and multiply it by the sale of the property, you're talking about a significant amount of money. So I'm just saying what the rate would be for our, an attorney fee as opposed to listing it with an agent. And I'm not opposed to listing with an agent, I'm just, we haven't even, if we did that.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed, I'm just saying there are things that we have to consider, because it, at the bottom, at the end of the day, it affects our bottom line.
Well, these are all thoughts.
At the end of the day, it's more money that can go into the field.
Sorry, so.
Or whatever we do.
If it's decided.
If it's decided, exactly.
I mean, are we even discussing?
That's my.
So, your, your discussion right now is, is a valid discussion, because the board's going to make a decision later during the regular session.
So.
Once you make that decision, this discussion, if it goes, you know, while the decision is, based on the direction of the decision, this discussion then is where we, or, you know, I working through the board, will make a determination on what is the best, and we can get cost structure or different processes. Because I understand the only piece that has to be voted on is whether or not we would like to or not to put the property for sale. And then the other piece that is voted upon is, at the time an offer comes in, if the board chooses to accept or to decline.
Hold on, wait, I want to make sure that that's correct, because my understanding, um, legally is that we are responsible for property sales, we are responsible, um, for contracts, and remind me of the third thing that I can't even think of right now. But I think I would, I would want us to be, like, open about this with the board.
Well, no, that's, that's exactly what I just said.
He's saying that's what action we would take.
Yeah, those are the actions you take as a board. It's not that anything happens without the board's knowledge. There's only three things that the board would vote on, once the board makes a determination. If the board determines to vote to sell, then the next thing that the board would vote on is, um, if the board chooses to go with a real estate agent and chooses to put it up for bid, they would vote on that.
Okay.
And then the third thing the board would vote on is a final offer. But if the board chooses not to go with the sell, then it's a dead deal, we move on.
Okay. Ms. Kaminsky, go ahead.
Um, and I think to clarify what Najah was trying to say, and tell me if I'm wrong, without using the property as an example, when I bought my house, the realtor who represented me was a friend. The realtor did not charge the person, the going percentage, and the only percentage that we had to pay was to the realtor of the buyer. So there was a discount given, because I was friends with the realtor, and what my interpretation of what Najah was trying to say is we should try and find a realtor who's willing to give a discount on whatever that going percentage is. Is that correct?
We're allowed to do that.
We were just.
Well, the purchaser doesn't pay. You, you as a buying a house wouldn't pay the percentage, and you bought your home.
The seller, the seller.
The seller pays it. She said when she bought her home, her friend, is that what she said?
Yes, but.
So you wouldn't pay it, the seller would have paid it, not you.
Oh, that's true, but she didn't charge.
Well, yeah, you don't get charged.
Unless he cut it, there's what in.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Okay.
I got.
So, can, can I just ask, um, I know, like, there's a lot of this information that, I mean, I know we kind of touched on it in the, you know, the last, during the last, um, meeting, um, but I'm looking, because I know it's, it's saying that a healthy percentage for a fund balance is 20% or higher. I was under the impression that a healthy fund balance was.
15 is what we were.
No.
I thought it was 12.
Healthy fund balance is 18 to 20%. We want to stay, we consider 20% as being a very healthy fund balance.
Okay. Have we looked at any other possibilities or options for doing this?
Sue, can, there's only one other option, and this is my professional opinion, people can disagree, but it's a bond or a sinking fund village. That's the only other option.
I know, I, I'm sorry. So my, I guess my biggest concern, and I know I said this before, and I know not everybody, we're not all on the same page, which is fine, is letting go of, of land in the city that we will never get back. And I'm, I'm afraid that in five to six years.
Are we debating this now?
Do, are we not?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask something else real quick, to add a third facet to this.
Go ahead.
If we decide we're going to sell it, and we decide we're going to list it, we need to vote on that. Do you also want to have a vote on how we proceed from there, whether we go with a realtor or we do it ourselves? Because I think what we're saying right now is, what we decide is we're going to sell it, Dr. Masalim, do what you do.
Right, but what she's saying, what she's saying, I know, I know exactly, I understand. But she also has a valid point in asking the questions, if there's any other alternatives that we can look at.
I'm, I'm not questioning. No, I know she's got, she's, she's got a point, her questions. But I think right now what we're talking about is.
Just the process.
The process, more so than the project itself.
You could discuss that during.
Yeah, I mean, that's something I, I would hope you bring up later, yeah.
During the start, the, uh, comment, right. Yes, Mr. Baydun.
Question goes to Dr. Masalim. Is this the first, or even maybe you and Sue would probably know best, is this the first piece of real estate we buy ourselves, a district?
No.
The board office.
No, the board office.
With the board.
Why is, I'm not understanding why.
Because.
This is so, so much different.
No, 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 we're not debating, because what had happened, when the property, when the board office was bought, it went directly through Plant Moran.
I don't.
Yeah.
Did we add, did we ask Plant Moran for a discount?
Um, did we ask for?
My point is, these are, these are steps.
Not only was there not a discount, but you know how much.
We probably paid.
But do we want to go there?
No, no, the property didn't cost, it was the renovating that, that ended up costing.
So my point is that we buy and sell assets. If you look at the course of the district history, there's been multiple purchases and sells, right?
This is the first that we've sold.
This is the first.
As sold.
Since I've been on the board.
As, as a sold, okay.
Yeah.
As a sell, sorry.
There was no discount to be given when Plant Moran did it, because we were purchasing.
But when we buy, did we, did we go through a different process? To me, buying or selling is.
No, you, you don't ask for a discount when you're buying.
Why?
Because we weren't paying the, the commission. We were buying.
But technically, there was a commission.
Yeah, but that had nothing to do with.
It referenced Sue's question on, on when she bought her house. Same thing.
Sue's, no.
But no, I, I spoke incorrectly. This, the realtor did not charge his per, 3% commission.
Right.
At all, to the buyer, to the seller.
My, my point is, we're putting a lot of attention on something that.
We're not even there yet.
Exactly.
We're not even there yet. Mr. Sabah, go ahead.
Just one last point, maybe this is something you can find somewhere in the dusty old finders somewhere. When we sold the building on Haas, years and years ago, uh, that is now another charter school, how was that handled?
I will ask Kristin, and I will dig into the archives. Sorry, Kristin.
Were you here?
Where are those archives?
Oh, no. Oh, no, that was, you got to find a roaming dinosaur.
Hold on a second. Did we, oh, it was Fairland Christian, but did we own it at the time?
Yeah, we, we owned it.
Okay, that was before my time.
That was way before my time. We're talking 25 plus.
There's a reason I asked that.
Kristin, you got.
I, I agree with what Mr. Baydun was saying, in the context of asking people to do things for pro bono. I get it. And nobody's saying that we should or should not, I'm just saying if we decide to go down that path, which we can talk about later.
Right.
But I just wanted to see if we had something there. By the way, please don't go roaming through the books. I was just, please do it, great if you don't, don't worry about it.
We'll see what we can find.
So, can I have one more?
One more thing, go ahead.
My initial thought process on that, again, before it was ever even brought, before anybody ever presented, was maybe we could find somebody that was willing to do that, because there are several people who have children in the district, or we, I think we all know an agent or two or three or four or 10, if I, you know. And I wasn't sure if that was part of the conversation before it was ever brought to us. So that's why it was initially brought up. I think, hey, if we could, and, and it, that person on their own decided, but I'm not even saying that it was a must, but I also like Danielle's idea, so I think that there's options, and if that is the route that we take, then there are things that we can look into or consider.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Uh, we're going to move on, discussing something, introduce our next presenters.
All right, so I'd like to turn it over to Andrea, who will invite the team up to present a data piece. Two reasons, one, because we want to keep up the speed, but number two, this is also a state requirement that we have to present this at least once a year. So Andrea, you want to invite the team?
So they're not here because they.
You're going to have to step up to the microphone, Andrea.
Where's Andrea's mic?
You don't have a microphone in front of you, do you? Sorry, TV.
Strategic team, Zainab, Jawad Baydun, Radwain Awada, and Joel Fabres will be presenting.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work for just that.
Good evening.
As many times as I've been here, this is still very uncomfortable. Um, the district strategic team has been working on lots of compliance pieces, and this is one of the pieces that, because of COVID-19 and the alignment of return to school and ensuring that we have a district assessment, uh, the 98B legislation was given to us in the beginning of the fall, uh, and we had to set a district goal, including building level goals. Mr. Awada is joining us virtually. You want to click, Mr. Awada? So the 98B requirement in summary is that every student in the district take a district assessment, which for us is the iReady assessment, and that assessment would be given at beginning, middle, and end. The 98 compliance piece has to be posted on our website with the beginning and middle of year scores only, but we will be adding the end of year scores, because it gives us a better data story and a better understanding of where our kids are, truly are at the end of the school year. I'm not going to read off the screen, I'm sure you've all got a copy already, so Mr. Awada, you can go to the next one. Our district goal is that all students below grade level will meet their typical growth. Now, typical growth is, has a different explanation than what we would typically look at. What does typical growth actually mean? Go ahead, Mr. Awada, next one. Uh, next one. So typical growth means the average annual growth of students at each grade and placement level. I'm sorry, I can't read off the screen, I apologize. Typical growth allows us to see how our students are doing in comparison to all other students at their grade level in our district, as well as at the state level, and across, we can go through the Michigan Data Hub to look at how their growth means, what the growth looks like for other students here in Michigan.
I'm sorry, can I, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Can you just walk us through how we get to get through the iReady?
You are going to get there. That's where I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Awada, right now, actually, Ms. Berry. And he actually is going to walk you through the platform, which you don't see in your packet, because we can't give you those links to get in, but he's going to show you how, what the measurements look like by grade level. So I'm not letting Mr. Awada take over.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One more question, too. When you say, um, compare, comparing them, are you comparing, like, nearby districts all over Michigan or specific ones?
So at first, we look at all of our students, let's say, at first grade across our district, then we look at all of the students across the state, because we're able to do that through the Michigan Data Hub, and how the data is now uploaded into one, one, uh, platform. We're able to do that comparison. We're, we are required to look at our students and look at their growth, and ensure that our students are showing growth in that area, in, in reading and math. All right, Mr. Awada, you're up.
Okay, I just want to say, good evening, President Berry, Vice President Kaminsky, Treasurer Ms. Elzayat, Secretary Ms. Janoon, Trustee Ms. Fawaz, Trustee Mr. Sabah, and Trustee Mr. Baydun, Dr. Masalim, Dr. Lozar, and Ms. Penny Morgan, and Ms. Amber O'Hara. I just want to, really, a quick shout out to the board for doing a wonderful job and continuing to support the children of the Crestwood community. Uh, we appreciate all you do. I know you know O'Hara enough, but we truly appreciate you.
We appreciate you more, to see you there or coming along.
Um, so I, I wanted to start off by, uh, I know you had a lot of questions just come up in a short period of time. What is it that exactly you want to see, um, from our, our platform today? If there is any preference that you have, I'll make sure I cover it. I don't want to, I could spend hours on the platform, but I definitely want to use, uh, your feedback in, in regards to what questions you may have.
Can I start, if you guys don't mind? I just want to give kudos to Dr. Masalim. This rigor, I loved it. You don't know how happy that made me to read that. So that's what I'd like to see. Where are we going with this rigor? How are we starting this process? What's it involved? You know, how are the students doing this? Um, what are the? I know, I, I'm, I know, because this was, when I saw that you said that, my, I, my, I swear to God, my skin was just like, wow, you know? This is what I want to see. So this is so exciting to see what you guys are doing and to, to, to get the, the feedback from you guys, so we understand the process and what to look for, and where our students are going. So that's what I'd like to see. Any questions from other board members? No? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Awada, you're on.
So I'm going to share, uh, share the screen and then take you right to the iReady platform. Some things to consider before I do that, um, obviously, nothing replaces quality teacher instruction, and the iReady platform is not intended to do so. It does a few things for our students and our staff. Number one, it's a great informational tool for our administrators and their school improvement teams. Number two, it's a great monitoring tool, um, for teachers, and it also is a great instructional resource for teachers. And then it provides, um, some excellent resources for parents. And most importantly, the, the whole, the nucleus of, of the iReady program is the learning path it develops for students based on what we call the iReady diagnostic. The iReady diagnostic is administered at the beginning, middle, and end of the year, and that's what teachers use to inform their instruction. But in addition to the teachers using that to inform their instruction, the students are always also given a learning path to practice on daily, at a minimum of 45 minutes a week, and, um, complete lessons at the end of each of those, or quizzes at the end of each of those lessons to ascertain understanding. Uh, the iReady diagnostic, it's a norm reference test, it's similar to the M-Step, similar to NWEA. But again, it gives us that added layer of students having their own, um, uh, learning path, customized to their needs. So it takes and looks at all the domains of reading and of math. In reading, it looks, uh, at the phonics, the phonological awareness, the vocabulary, the high-frequency words, the literary comprehension, and then the informational comprehension. Um, it's a great informational piece for, uh, the teachers, again, to inform their instruction. Secondly, in math, it looks at every domain in math, the number and operations, the algebraic thinking, the measurement and data, and the geometry, and how each of our, our cohorts are doing in each of those domains, in each of the respective areas. So if you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen and take you right to the platform and let you see what our administrators have access to, as well as our teachers, and all the resources that are made available through iReady. as well as our teachers and all the resources that are made available through iReady. Is that pretty clear to everyone?
Pretty small.
Small, yeah.
Really small.
Oh, boy. Um.
Just put it in presentation mode. It should, uh, get a lot bigger.
Well, this is, um, this is right off the, um, the website.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is, this is, um.
Right, right-click role, right-click role on your mouse on the screen.
Yeah, I, I did. I, I've tried, I've tried this before. It just doesn't give you that option. It's sort of their server, so it doesn't let you play with it like you would.
You have, let's just sum up this data already embedded into that PowerPoint, which will be posted in the web as part of the.
Okay.
He just wants to show you how the platform actually works.
I just want to share and highlight some of the things that, um, this provides for our, our staff. We have access to managing the platform, adding new teachers, adding different, uh, rights. The assess and teach part is really what we want to look at and offering reports and so forth. But I know the board is interested to see, um, so as Mr. Awad mentioned, the diagnostics administered at the beginning, again, in the middle, then again, at the end of the year. We want to look for growth, and typical growth is how much growth. We're not looking at grade level and, and students being on grade level, but how much they grow over one year. Um, this here gives you a, a good breakdown. I'm gonna start with reading. Uh, this is all schools. Um, so please don't be alarmed, there's some things that, uh, have obviously impacted our students' learning over the past few years. But this is great because we have now the information we need to, to focus our instruction at every grade level. As an entire district, um, what you're gonna see here is a comparison. The bottom being the fall and then the mid-year being most recent. The, um, the red with the stripes, that indicates, uh, students being three or more years behind in reading. Uh, students that are two or more years behind in reading are in the solid red. Students that are one year behind in reading are in the yellow. Uh, students at grade level are in green. And then the stripe with the green are students performing above grade level.
May I share?
Yes.
So I'm sorry, I can't see the percentages, but what are you defining? I, I understand that some of them would not make, um, grade level because of, you know, COVID and everything that's going on. But what are you considering or measuring as a good percentage of growth for them?
So as our, as our district, we've asked that all students meet their typical growth. Um, so with the fall diagnostic, fall assessment, uh, it, the program itself identifies the typical growth that student should show over one year, one academic year. And we're looking to make sure that all of our students are meeting, uh, that typical growth. There's another growth piece called stretch growth, where students exceed that typical growth and go above and beyond their, uh, their typical growth. But one thing I want you to keep in mind is, we want kids bunny, bunny jumping to the next level. That's really our aim and our goal. And we want these numbers in the three or more years behind to decrease, the two or more years behind to decrease. Um, all these numbers to decrease, but we want the green areas to increase. And as you can see, uh, our students performing at or above grade level increased 6% and exceeding went from 8% to 16%.
Oh, I see. Wow, I didn't see that.
I'm sorry. I, I wish I could make it.
No, no, that's okay. He, he just gave me the numbers. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so as I, I spoke to the, each of the domains, they also have a comparison. This little line down here, it gives us a, you know, phonological awareness is really K1, 2. Um, it shows that we did a great job reducing the amount of students that were three-year behind from, uh, 3% to 1%. Um, we were at 9% for kids two or more years behind. Now we're at 6%. Um, for students, we went at grade level from 3 to 4%. And, uh, now we have pretty much, uh, 88% of our students have mastered that domain. Uh, going on to phonics, again, uh, same thing, we're seeing improvement across the board, uh, which is a testament to our teachers and, and all the support staff and, and rigorous instruction. Now, um, by no means do we want to say that that's the ceiling. We definitely want to continue to push for, uh, greater growth and eliminate the red altogether and move to getting all the people in yellow to green and green to, um, the stripes. We can see that our greatest need is comprehension of informational text um, across the district and followed by comprehension in literature and then vocabulary. By grade level, uh, this, I'm sorry, go ahead. Please interrupt anytime. I just can't see you.
Okay. Mr. Baydun, go ahead.
So this is basically our new baseline. As we were talking about in December in our meeting, this is it.
Yes, yes, sir. This is the baseline we're, we're using. We also use WEATA data as well for our bilingual students. We also use the M-step uh, for our third through, um, eighth grade students and the PSAT as well. Um, so we're, we're assembling, uh, an aggregate of data so we can use multiple sets of data. We always want to be looking at three pieces of data. iReady is one of those pieces. But what's so nice about the iReady platform is it does a majority of the work for the, for the teachers where they're not having to spend inordinate amount of time dissecting the data. They can look at the data, here's what the data is telling us, and then use that data to, uh, to create an action plan now what. Now, how do we respond to what the data is telling us and concentrate their instruction accordingly? Thank you. Are there any other questions? So real quick, again, there's a comparison in reading for each grade, uh, grade kindergarten, uh, doing a phenomenal job. Um, and as you see, you know, the, the students that, um, started the school year, one year behind at pre-k, uh, that was significantly, significantly cut. You could see the percentage differences here from 79% to 44%. Students were 18% at, uh, grade level. Now they're at 32%. And then, again, the advanced students went from 3% to 24%. Similarly, you could take a look at kindergarten and, uh, grade one, grade two, and grade three. Grades one, two, and three are very instrumental, and the read-by-third-grade law is gonna be in full effect. And we definitely have to, uh, use this data to allocate our resources accordingly. Um, but again, the percentages show great growth. Again, this is just mid-year. We'll gladly come back at the end of the year and present the end-of-the-year data so you have a better understanding of how many students in each subgroup met their typical growth, their stretch growth, or didn't meet their growth at all.
Hold on, I'm sorry, one sec. Is there any way that that board can be brought up closer? No? Okay. I'm just dying to see how it's.
It's hard to see it, but you'll have them in the packet.
Okay.
But that's part of the compliance piece, so we need to make sure that the community sees what we're doing, as well as our school board and.
My eyes.
I know, I can't.
God, what if you control-plus it to increase the screen size, the text size? Will that make it bigger?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is.
Keep going. Okay.
I mean, this is gonna, um.
Go off the page.
This is gonna be on my screen after.
Right. Thank you.
Is that okay? Is that better?
That's, yeah, that's a little bit better.
Okay. Um, so again, uh, students in kindergarten, first grade, the red, uh, is our, identifies our, our bottom 30 students. Most definitely, it helps teachers, um, identify those students and again, plan for instruction. What this, this easily does, um, it also goes, it breaks it down by all schools. Then I can go to a specific school, then I can go to a specific teacher. And each of the teachers have access to these, um, scores in the same context I'm showing them to you. Um, same difference, if I pick a school, just gonna randomly, uh, sorry. I'm just gonna randomly choose a school. And let's say Kinlock, for example, um, it gives you their breakdown. And, um, from the fall diagnostic to the mid-year, you could see the growth over time, uh, which again, is a testament to the teacher's hard work and, and the administrator's, uh, leadership. Um, and then again, it then takes it and breaks it down to by teacher. So the administrators can use that data and have effective dialogue meetings and really talk about each student individually and how to, um, create a plan of action for each individual student.
That's awesome.
Okay, and, uh, so that was for reading. I'm gonna jump into math. It's the same exact thing uh, that you're looking at. This is the breakdown of our, um, of our district. And you see the improvement. We're at 13% of our students performing at three grade levels below. Uh, we reduced that to 4%. We were at 36% in the fall. We reduced that, that are performing two years below. We reduced that to 14%. Uh, we were at 41% in, uh, in the fall for our students one year below. And that went up to 60% because of the reductions in the two or more years and three or more years behind. So that increased significantly. Additionally, our students at grade level went from 8% to 14% at the grade level and then 3% to 8% in students performing above grade level. As we can see, it breaks it down by domain. So we can know as PLC teams, uh, where we need to focus and where we need to pay more attention than elsewhere. Uh, measurement and data, geometry, uh, algebraic thinking, and number and operations remain.
Mr. Awada, one, one second, please. Go ahead, Sue.
Mr. Awada, was there one particular grade that stood out that seemed to have the biggest deficit in math and none in reading? And if so, what grade?
Uh, great question, Vice President Kaminsky. And it was, um, our pandemic grades. Our, our second and our third grades, uh, looked to be in more of a need. And, um, if you don't mind, I'll just take you to the, um. All right, apologies.
No, I appreciate it.
Sometimes it's easier just to start from the beginning. Um, so, so when you look at all schools, um, and we do drop down to the grades, you can see our second grade and our third grades are the ones that are, are neediest. And sure, we can attribute it to the pandemic, but we're also seeing great growth right now in those, those two grades. Um, and again, this allows, uh, the administrators to, to, to bring it down from whole school uh, to individual grade level teams and then, uh, to individual teachers and then to individual students. And it gives all the data for them is, they don't have to spend the hours and hours and hours that we used to do. Um, they can now analyze, spend the time analyzing the data and creating an action plan in response to that data. So you can also see our fifth, um, our fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, um, they were affected. But as, if we do not address the deficiencies early on, you will see this with every data set, those will continue to get larger. The, the, uh, it, that's why we really have to be specific with our intervention and our resources allocation to help these students at the bottom 30, um, move up to the next level. And then reading.
I'm sorry, my question would be, this is our first set, right? So would you be able to, um, hold on to this, these scores and then show us the difference at the end?
Absolutely. And it will show you from, again, the fall to the mid-year and then the fall to the end of the year. And we'll give you a complete report so you have, um, you don't have to squint your eyes. You'll have it in front of you. Again, uh, these are the reading scores, um, and you can see the growth. Again, you can see second grade, third grade, uh, very needy grades. Um, but again, you jump to fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, uh, they too are, are needy. Um, do you have any questions?
I have a comment. I just would like to see the red go away. Yeah.
Uh, that is our goal.
Yes.
And I think, um, I'm gonna turn it over. And real quick, before I turn it over to Mr. Fabris in regards to the administrative team's response with curriculum and, uh, professional development, I just also want to mention that, um, the tools for instruction, um, that teachers have available to them, um, you know, it gives them lesson plans for every single standard. These are, the entire program is standard-aligned. Uh, so nothing they use out of iReady is not gonna be standard-aligned. It gives them lesson plans for, uh, phonics, phonological awareness, um, the, the vocabulary, the high-frequency words. Most importantly, it gives them excellent lessons and videos that accompany those lessons for comprehension of informational text and literary text.
That's awesome. Real quick, Mr. Seba had a question.
Sure. You, you did say you were gonna email these to us, right? Is that correct, Ms. Awad?
So if, I'd like to share the, the PowerPoint presentation. Yes, I want you download them and send them home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Awada.
Sure. And Mr. Fabris is gonna speak a little bit to the, uh, response that we're coming up with as a leadership team and how we're going to use what we currently have to really, um, create a better, uh, a better future for our students and our parents as well, uh, and our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Awada. So, uh, thank you, everybody. Um, you know, it's, it's exciting for me because when, when I became, um, principal at the, at the high school, it was, it was easy to see that we called ourselves a PLC, but we were not functioning as a PLC. And the first question of a PLC is, what do we want students to know? And that, that is strictly focused on the standards that you are going to be teaching the students. And what was also easy to realize is that we weren't on the same page. At grade level, at subject level, um, i- it was, people were working in isolation. There wasn't a common agreement or a common consensus among teachers of what those standards were where we wanted students to know. And the beautiful thing about having iReady, and thank you to you all, and, and, and we've got a piece of data to work with to start with that is aligned to standards that we are going to be supporting through the Curriculum Council work, through our PLC work to establish that throughout the district at grade level, at subject, um, in subject areas so that all teachers are teaching the same standards. And we are on a level playing field. And from there, we can, we can build. And it, it, we've never had this before. So, yes, as, um, uh, Sue had said earlier, this is, this is our baseline. It is our baseline. It is our point to grow from. And we are going to use this data and, and work with our teachers, the, the administrators, myself, Mr. Awad, Sohera, we're all going to work with our teachers in our, at the building levels to, to make this, make this count and to really help them understand how to use this data and how to, um, get our students to achieve better. That is, that is the short of it.
Well, what I can say is, this is really exciting for the district. And this has been like a dream finally, uh, coming to fruition because, um, yeah, this has been something. Thank you, Dr. Masalim. Thank you, Mr. Awada. Mr. Fabris, Mr. Awad, you guys are really taking this head on and, uh, I can't wait to see the results.
And I know that this, this data here is giving you a, a large picture of, of what our data is across the grid. But this is going to be broken down into subgroups, it's gonna be targeted to those that know what they're doing already, to those in the middle, to those that don't know what they're doing and need more help, to special ed, to ESL students. So there are a lot of subgroups that are gonna be impacted. And, and once we get that work, um, going, it's, you're gonna see, um, real improvement.
Go ahead and tell that.
What's the timeline typically on graduating a kid, a, a student from that red zone? What, what kind of timeline do we typically look at? Is that only assessed annually? So we'll only know a year later? Or do they come out of the red sooner than that?
Quarterly, isn't it?
Well, the good thing is, is we're going to be working with the teachers to use this data in their classrooms on a daily basis. And as Mr. Awad said, it's 45 minutes a week is what they recommend. So we're. So we're going to be targeting these students 45 minutes a week at least for these areas that they're deficient in. And, and hopefully the growth will come sooner than later. The, the assessment is given three times a year.
Okay.
But, but within, you know, the daily and weekly work of, of, in the classroom, we should see growth much sooner than, than just yearly.
Great.
So research shows that traditional growth is one year's growth every year. So if you're three years behind, you go to two, you go to two, you go to one, so also... As was mentioned, extended growth or stretch growth is a year and a half. Every student's in a different situation based on their current skill sets or what they're bringing in, as well as their supports at home. So what we, what the team is doing is when you look at that, that three to two years behind, those students are getting the, are supposed to be, and we're working on implementing even further, individualized intervention and small group intervention. Moreover, the key thing to this too, and I know they mentioned it, but I want to reemphasize it, is where our cost-effective analysis comes into play. Where we identify our professional development, the things that we need to do, where we need to put our money in order for the students to be successful. This is why we have the coaching positions. This is why we have the intervention positions. And then we're taking a step further where, for example, at the middle school, they're, they're redoing the entire schedule for next year so that there's more time for coaches to push in the classrooms and to focus on a lot of these groups. That's already happening in the elementary school. So this is part of that process. And the key thing Mr. Fabris and, and Zainab and Rodwin are doing is they're, and Andrea, they're talking with the teachers and the principals, identifying what professional development do they need? Where, where do you see it? And I will tell you, in the conversation with the informative text, across the nation, students that struggle in reading struggle on the informative text because informational text isn't, isn't, it isn't fun to read. But in all of the conversations with all of the different student, uh, the teachers, they've been talking about the informational text and how they want to do more of it and have more writing, which is exactly where we need to go.
The reason I ask too is not because I want you guys to like rush through all these kids, but I know that there's a lot of families that are struggling, struggling because their kids, um, didn't progress as well during the pandemic. And I know a, a lot of people are worried that their kids are stuck, you know, and, and they got no way of advancing. So I, this is great and bringing a lot of hope to those families. So in the, the event that you're testing, you know, at least three times a year, I, I, I think it's wonderful. Very, very good job.
And it will follow the students all the way through.
That's great.
Ms. Chair? Yes, Ms. Walas, go ahead.
Maybe too early to ask this, but at the end of the year, after they've taken their last quarterly iReady scores and you've done the comparisons, the ones that, um, are still in red, do we have any plans to, uh, maybe invite them, specifically those groups into like a summer school type of...
Yes.
Okay.
They're already working on it with Ms. Morgan and Ms. O'Hara. They're putting it together. We're budgeting, it's already budgeted. The schools submit their individual plans and each individual school is going to handle those programs themselves.
And that's all, um, grade levels or...
It'll be, it'll be, um, elementary through eight. Um, and then high school's going to be more credit recovery.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I understand that the younger kids are easier to coach and have them, um, work in groups to try and catch up. Are we having a harder time with the high school kids or are they receptive to the extra attention, um, to get them up to where they need to be?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so the iReady test is really only a K8 assessment.
Okay.
However, when we see that there are high school students that are that far below grade level, we realize that they need to come up. I think another factor to that is they get tested a lot. And, you know, they, a lot of them didn't take this round seriously, but we've had, um, teachers and coaches working on the students at the high school level, talking about how important this is. And it's, the, one of the first responses that a lot of students have was, well, let me retake it. It's like, you're just going to have to wait. You're going to get a chance to retake it.
Right.
And then you can show us what you're going to do. And, and, and all students really, they do want to learn and they do want to see their growth. I was meeting at Riverside today, um, with some teachers and some of the first things you'll hear students say is, did I beat my last score? When, after they take this assessment. So it's almost like that Nintendo effect. I want to beat, beat the last game that I had. And I want to be, I want to do better than I did the last time. So there, there is that. But, um, I, I think you'll see a progressive, uh, growth and, and much more. The, the students will take it much more seriously as, as we go on and they understand what it is. It's the first year we're using it. And, um, it, it'll grow as, as we move on with it.
I have a real quick question, I'm sorry. Are they able to access this at home where they can use it as support?
You know, that's a better question for Mr. Awada. I believe they can.
Yes, well, so President Barry, uh, each student, after they take the diagnostic, a learning path is created for them in accordance with their needs. If you recall, I talked to you about the domains in, in math. The number and operations, algebraic thinking, geometry, data and measurement. A lot of times what's happening, and this goes back to, uh, Trustee Elzayat's question about growth and how quickly can a child... Well, a lot of times it's one area that's really bringing that score down and really keeping that child down. And that's the great thing about iReady. It really, it, it's very specific to that child's needs. So anything they do on iReady Math will be specific to that child's needs. And that child will then have the lesson that they are given. And again, 45 minutes a week with a 70% or plus on the quiz that they receive at the end of the lesson. That's the recommended amount of time. And if we meet that threshold right there, and if the program works, which it does, that by default will bring that student's score up 10% without any additional, anything else. But then you add the teacher instruction and specific teacher instruction to where that child, uh, child's needs and that individual and small group, consulting that the teacher has with the students on a daily basis, that's where you're really going to get the big bang for the buck. But they all have, after they take the diagnostic, a learning path is created for every student. And that student can access it at home. It's all through Clever, the single server option we use as our district. And they can practice it at home, they practice it at school. The one thing, we're really going to push hard for parents to make sure that they're meeting that 45 minutes a week and that they're completing those quizzes with a 70% uh, plus proficiency.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Sajinder?
My question was already answered, thank you, Mr. Awada.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Nice job.
We can't wait to see the results. So when are you coming back? Three months?
We, we know opens this in two weeks and doesn't, uh, close until last year, so sometime at the end of June.
Excellent.
Most likely August. Probably August.
I don't want to see no red.
No pressure, no pressure.
Yeah, no pressure. Thank you guys, great job.
God bless you all.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else from the superintendent?
Nothing from me, Madam Chair.
So we can, um, move to adjourn?
Yep.
Okay, 6:49. Do I have a motion? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Baydu, supported by Mr. Seba. Is there, um, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.